Council present, so I will call our meeting to order. Karen, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Yeah.
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Munson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Here.
And Mayor Bain.
Here. I would ask that everybody rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would like to cut your camera before you do so, you can do so in the bottom left of your Zoom tray. Dan, if you could display your flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Councilmembers, we have an agenda before you this evening. I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes. Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda. There's a motion.
A second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Munson and a second from Councilmember Gerard. And Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
May, Mayor Bain.
Please, go ahead.
Can I ask a question before we vote? I know that we do need to pull item CC from the consent agenda. The paperwork, the PUD for St. Peter's Church was not available this evening. And so we need, we will not be addressing that issue, that item on the consent agenda this evening. So I would like to amend the motion to approve removing item CC from the consent agenda.
All right, thank you for bringing that up. I missed that entirely. I thought we were moving it to the regular agenda, so thank you for that. Councilmember Munson, will you entertain the amendment?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the agenda with Councilmember Beistrum's amendment.
Excellent, and was it Councilmember Gerard was the second?
Yes, I.
Second the amendment.
Prove the amendment, yeah.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Beistrum, for catching that. Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Hi.
Councilmember Husnick.
Hi.
Councilmember Munson.
Hi.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Hi.
Mayor Bain.
Hi, agenda is approved. With that, we do have an open forum this evening. And I would ask if there's anybody to present an open forum. Karen, go ahead.
I do have one to read. Did you want to do that one first or have a presentation first?
Let's have the presentation first. We are open forum, we're running about 30 minutes behind an open forum this evening. So out of respect for time, let's do that. And is this Mr. Stevens?
I'm assuming so. He is in the attendees waiting, so I'm assuming so.
Perfect. Just a little bit of background, council members. Mr. Stevens had asked to be on the agenda this evening. While there isn't necessarily action for council to take, I did invite him to present to us an open forum and granted him the ability to go over our typical three minutes. Max will wait while you are joining us here. And also while, Max, while you're joining us and just for the benefit of everybody, open forum is opportunities for members of the public to address council. It is typically your opportunity to address us. We don't typically engage in conversation back and forth, but typically instruct staff to get back to you on any of the concerns you have. And so just want to set some expectations here, but we welcome you to the floor and the floor is yours. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Expectations are understood. Good evening. Thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time today. My name is, as said, is Max Stevens. I've been the owner and operator of award-winning restaurant Stella's on 97 since 2007. We're located adjacent to Castlewood Golf Course. I've also been a member of Forest Hills Golf Club since 1994, while serving on various committees and the Board of Directors. I know something about running golf courses and restaurants. My goal tonight is to, one, establish an agreement with the city to share the expense of the parking lot. Number two, level the playing field between me and my competitor, the golf course management. Here's a little background on how we got to where we are today. 13 years ago, when Jim Trudeau ran the golf course, I ran the restaurant. It was that simple. He did his thing, I did mine. A few years later, Jeremy Walker took over the course management. After a while, he began to struggle and search for some sources of new revenue. He added a 3-2 beer and wine license, talked about some new food options, et cetera. Last year, foursome management took over the course operations and added a full liquor license and pizza. Now there's talk of adding hot dogs and more to the offerings. They also were provided a guaranteed profit of $50,000. Anyone that thinks the new clubhouse isn't going to expand the food and beverage offerings at Castlewood doesn't know the history. It's been claimed that the existing pro shop can't properly social distance. In the last planning commission meeting, the idea of a sliding window in the new clubhouse was raised so golfers didn't have to come into the building. That would work in the existing building, too. There's already a sliding window in place at the existing building. The city administrator keeps downplaying the size of the existing pro shop like its closet size. In the last planning commission meeting, he said it was like a 6x9 trailer size. In reality, it's 14 feet by 28 feet. There is plenty of room to operate while maintaining and social distancing and expanding products and services offered. If you need help to figure this out, let me know, I'll be glad to help. One more thing about the current clubhouse. According to the current development agreement, the same one that declares the parking lot easement, I'm required to provide the golf course management space for a pro shop. The owner-operator of the golf course is to rent that space from me. The building of the new clubhouse adds up to immediate lost rent revenue for me of at least $3,000 a year. It's been claimed that the new clubhouse will not compete with Stella's. The fact is, if one person buys a beer at the clubhouse that would have otherwise bought it from Stella's, they're competing with us. The funny thing is, I don't have a problem with competition. I love competition, but I want it to be fair competition. My competitors should have similar expenses. There should be no guaranteed profit. They should be subject to the same regulation. They should have to share in the expense of the common area, for example, the parking lot. It's been claimed that the city has a parking lot easement for golf course patrons. What is a golf course patron? And at what point does a golfer stop being a golf course patron? Can those patrons tailgate in the parking lot after they play? If someone stops in just for a hot dog and a beer, are they golf course patrons? If a person stops to play the planned simulators, have a pizza and a beer or two, are they golf course patrons? And what is an easement? If an easement allows access and use of a space, does that easement permit the access and use without sharing in the expenses of the space, like a parking lot? The cost of maintaining a parking lot includes wear and tear, property taxes, maintenance like plowing, striping, patching, sealing, cleaning, as well as insurance, lighting, et cetera. Why does Stella's have to bear all of the expense from a parking lot that we share? What kind of numbers are we talking about? The expected life of a parking lot is 15 to 20 years. Costs about 3, it costs about $360,000 to pave the parking lot. Stella's paid $26,526 in property taxes this year. We paid $26,528 in property insurance. Those are big numbers. The city administrator said, and I quote, "In the agreement, it says, 'Plow snow.' We haven't done that for a while because the agreements were not assignable to anybody after the people who signed it. The only one that could assign those rights were the town at the time. They never did that, so there's no agreement to enforce as far as some of that other stuff goes." End quote. He's going to have city attorneys write something up. Wow, is that how this is going to work? The city will hide behind all of their attorneys to avoid paying their fair share of parking lot overhead? If that's the way it's going to work, you win, I lose. You and your taxpayer dollars can afford a stable of lawyers, I can't, especially when the governor has Stella's shut down. Forget the agreements, forget the easement. They, the city, should want to step up and do what they can to set up and maintain a quality and fair relationship with their neighbor. It's the right thing to do. The city administrator stated that there's a, quote, "misconception" that there will be a full-service bar open until midnight or something. That's obviously not the case, close quote. How do we know that? There's nothing in writing stating a limitation to what the golf course management, current or future, can do out of the clubhouse. In fact, the drawing of the clubhouse is a blank space as of the last planning commission meeting. I would like to know exactly what the plans are for the operation of the clubhouse. Has anyone done financial projections to see what it takes to make this a break-even venture? Or is this a build-it-and-they-will-come deal? It's looking a lot like the latter. City administrator said, quote, "We're trying to kind of run a golf course with a clubhouse on someone else's property and leaving three, and having three people get in there and be crowded. Again, it's about sustaining a golf course, improving the golf course, just making it sustainable so that, again, we don't have to spend tax dollars to support this thing." End quote. "I have been subsidizing Castlewood for years with the parking lot expenses and the waived rent. It's high time we got the golf course off Stella's back." When asked about the electrical service to the new clubhouse, the city administrator said, quote, "The electricity is already out to the current clubhouse and it's underneath the ground anyway, so it'll probably be extended to the new clubhouse." End quote. Here's what I know to be true. There is electricity in the new clubhouse. It's not underground and it will not be extended to the new clubhouse. This project has been and continues to be one of the most ill-conceived and poorly-planned projects I've ever been involved with. I know it was done in a hurry. That's not an excuse to do it poorly. I know a lot about the history and current condition of the relationship between the restaurant, the city, and the golf course. Because of that, I can tell when the city administrator is spitballing, when he's making things up as he goes along. I will go on record as saying that there's little or no chance of this project resulting in a break-even enterprise. I believe that you will find in a few years, in spite of spending more than a quarter of a million dollars to make it happen, this boat will not float. I hope I'm wrong. Having said that, in order to maintain a spirit of cooperative competition, an agreement should be worked out between the city and the restaurant. The new agreement is to replace the outdated development agreement from 30-plus years ago and be generic enough to outlive the current city administration and restaurant ownership. There are two main components to the new agreement that we should address. One, the city to share the expense of the parking lot. And two, level the playing field between the restaurant and golf course management. The manager, management of the golf course should limit the sale of food and beverages. Here are some suggestions I could live with. We should sit down together and discuss these items. Beer, seltzer, malt beverages, and wine should be sold in non-glass, single-serving containers. The sale of liquors is not allowed. This allows them to provide a consistent quality product without the need for excessive inventory or skills to mix adult beverages made with liquor. It also makes it easy to identify where the product was purchased since Stella's primarily, Stella sells primarily glass containers. It's also a safer option by reducing the chance of breakage on the course. Food offered for sale should be limited to the kinds you might find at a golf course halfway house or snack shack. Allowed would be hot dogs, bratwurst, Italian sausage, breakfast sandwiches, frozen pizza soup, or anything that can be cooked or heated using a microwave, hot dog roller, steam table, or pizza toaster. Not allowed, any food that requires equipment that needs a ventilation system, a deep fryer, air fryer, grill, broiler, range, oven, et cetera, including burgers, french fries, pasta, steaks, et cetera. This is intended to allow the golf course management to offer a wide range of food and beverages for sale while avoiding as much as possible any overlap with the restaurant's food and beverages. Hours of operation for the clubhouse should be limited. A closing time for food and beverage service of 6 o'clock allows the course management to serve league golfers before they begin their rounds and allows the restaurant to serve them after their rounds. Course management is allowed to run their beverage cart on the course until golfers complete their rounds. I should mention here, I believe it possible to operate, as described above, out of Castlewood's current pro shop and maintain social distancing. There's already a pass-through on the south end of the building. Green fees, cart rental, balls, teas, food, and beverages could be sold to the golfers without coming inside. The old clubhouse will remain in place until if or when the new clubhouse is ready to be occupied. If the old clubhouse is going to remain, the city is responsible to bring it up to date with any changes necessary. If it is no longer needed, the city will have the structure removed and a level ground left in its place. As far as the parking lot is concerned, people are allowed to use our parking lot. That's all we should have to say. The city should start saving for a new parking lot today. When the time comes to replace the current parking lot, the city should be ready to contribute 33% of the cost. The restaurant, 67%. The city is responsible for conducting all parking lot maintenance, plowing, patching, sealing, striping, cleaning, et cetera, at the restaurant's request. The restaurant will cover property taxes, insurance, and lighting. Overnight parking is not allowed, except for those that have too much, have had too much to drive home, a vehicle down, or the rare occasion when somebody needs to park lumber in the lot. I believe this to be a very generous offer. Some would say too generous. I've had people ask, "Why are you welcoming a government-subsidized competitor into your backyard?" I say it's because those are the things you do for your neighbor. Maybe I'm an idiot, maybe I'm a saint. I don't think I'm either. I just want to get along. This short overview probably raised as many questions as it's answered. If you'd like to discuss anything I've said, you can reach me at 651-261-1134 or stellas97@yahoo.com. Thank you for your time and attention. Godspeed in your deliberations and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Max. Karen, continuing on with open forum, I believe you've got another, is there anybody else in person? And if, if not, I think you've got something to read.
Unmute Karen. I think I have someone in the attendees, I think it says Zoom user, and Dan felt that it was Mark Fineman. I also am waiting for Leif Erickson to join the meeting. I sent him the link, so I don't know, but I don't see.
He is here, he's here.
He's here.
You see, oh, okay, all right, great. So I think I'm going to move whoever Zoom user is. I think that it's Mark Fineman, so I'm going to promote him into the meeting.
And while you're doing that, Leif, did you want to address council this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Bain, Leif Erickson. I heard Max's letter during the ETA meeting earlier tonight, as did Mr. Fineman. And we just, as an organization and as a citizen of Forest Lake who really appreciates Stella's work, just want to speak in support of the recommendations he made and the concerns he brought up, specifically as it relates to the agreement that's currently in place around the parking lot. Regardless of the outcome of the clubhouse, whether a new is built or the existing is updated, I would certainly encourage council to work diligently to get an agreement in place between the restaurant and the city for years and years to come. And secondly, I would speak in support of his concerns around the expanding beverage and food lineup that has happened over the last several years. And with no, you know, agreements in place as far as what future course management might pursue or what future city administration might allow, I would love to see something get put in place very, very quickly that would really show our neighborly support for a local business owner like Max and Stella's Restaurant. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share tonight.
Thank you for being here. Mr. Fineman, yes, the floor is yours. I'm glad you're here.
Okay, thank you, I finally caught on. I'm happy with what Leif has said, essentially. We had a chance at the ETA to, ETA to listen to Max's proposals and thoughts. And he found a lot of sympathy within our group. It begins with most of us not being very happy with the diversion of funds from what it could have been in the CARE Act to this particular enterprise. And know tonight that what you're essentially deciding upon is whether to approve the use of those CARE funds or not. I think that's the general note you're taking. So that comes later in the story. We're just, we want for sure the two things take place that he mentioned, and that is that you fulfill all the requirements of the planning commission, which means you got to show them a lot more than you're showing them. You need a full submittal. They need to see the plans, how it's being used, and the other things that they've mentioned. And you also need this agreement with Max, the neighbor. You got to find some way to resolve that agreement before you can decide whether you're going to build this building or not. There's many items within that, electrical usage included, that say you've got some holes in, you know, how you're looking at the budget on this building at this point. So that's the general statement, other than the ETA is just, we'd love to hear about these development-oriented, economic-oriented things at an earlier date before final decisions are made by councils that we at least feel like we're part of a process. And so those are the concerns that were put out more than any others. That's my two cents.
Thank you for being here. And Karen, anybody else attending in the Zoom meeting that would like to speak in open forum this evening?
Um, I don't have any hands raised, so I'm going to take that as a no. And an email from the open forum, for the open forum email that I received. So let me dig that up. And this was sent in yesterday. It says, "Dear Mayor and City Council, I'm opposed to using CARES Act funds to improve the social distancing at Castlewood by expanding the clubhouse. While according to Mayor Bain, the golf course may have been used at unprecedented levels, the funds would be more helpful to more people by being used elsewhere. I respectfully suggest the League of Minnesota Cities webpage entitled 'CARES Act Funding Information for Cities' in the section "Get Answers to Frequently Asked Questions Regarding CARES Act Funding" and look specifically at "Eligible Expenses," question and answer number 11. I believe this provides clarity as to why an expansion of a golf course clubhouse for social distancing is an inappropriate use of the funds. I think anyone can appreciate the timelines that the mayor and council were under to utilize the funds. However, I would rather have our local officials be honest, not be able to find use for the funds and lose the funding than bypass the proper channels, for example, the planning commission, which has prescribed procedures in the city code, to rush something through. Honesty, transparency, and integrity goes a lot further than money. I only hope that the mayor and city council reverse their decision and can use the funds more appropriately or at the very least will follow city code in processing their plans. Sincerely, sorry, I got to get to the bottom of the email. Sincerely, Matt Lindholm, Forest Lake resident.
Thank you for that. And any other submissions for open forum this evening?
I don't have anything else.
Okay, thank you for being here, everybody. Your input is very much valued. And with that, we'll close open forum and we will move on to our consent agenda. Council, before you this evening, we have consent agenda items 6A through 6BB. I will entertain a motion or any changes.
Mayor Bain, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items 6A through 6BB.
There's a motion, there's a motion from Councilmember Beistrum and a second from Councilmember Munson. Karen, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Hi.
Councilmember Husnick.
Hi.
Councilmember Munson.
Hi.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Hi.
Mayor Bain.
Hi, consent agenda is approved. The next item on our agenda this evening is item 7A, which is to consider the purchase agreement for real property. I'm not going to go into the full legal description of the airport business park. And Patrick, you're walking us through this.
Yes, in front of you is a purchase agreement that has been approved by Ray Newkirk, who is the owner of the Team Vantage Company and also Custom Mold &amp; Design. Mr. Newkirk is wishing to build a new building close to Team Vantage and move his custom mold and design from over on Everton to this location. He has offered the city $50,000 an acre. The acreage is approximately 6.6 acres. We have submitted this to our attorneys for their review. They've been approved. Mr. Newkirk's approved it. We believe it's an excellent opportunity to spur the economic development, keep jobs in the city. And that airport business park's been empty for quite a while. It's positive, it's moving forward, and I think the price at $50,000 an acre is a good price. There are no other incentives involved. It's a straight real estate purchase. There's no request for TIF funding, there's no request for any subsidies. I think it's a win-win. Ray seems very happy with it, and I think we should approve it.
Thank you, Patrick. Council, is there any questions on the agreement before us this evening?
No, Ma, I mean, it just sounds like a good agreement. Yeah, I mean, it just sounds like a good agreement. We've talked about this several different times and, and I think, I think it's basically what we were hoping for. So as far as I'm concerned, it was a good agreement.
Terrific. Councilmember Gerard.
I would concur with Councilman Husnick. I think this is a great agreement. The only thing I want to know is, when's he planning to break ground?
He would like to start building sometime in the spring, I believe. He wants to get it moving.
Perfect.
Yeah, I, so I'll chime in here. This agreement is the end result of a couple of closed sessions that council has had with opportunity to review and negotiate the agreement. And so to be at this point without any additional city incentives, those that have been involved with this airport business park have known that this location has been challenged to some degree, and there's been a question of what would, what's going to fit there and what is it going to take to get the development that has been planned? This infrastructure was put into the business park, was it 10 years ago? And the city has been sitting on a sizable negative fund balance since that time, waiting for this type of a transaction to occur. So to have this be able to be used by an existing business for their expansion and to have that expansion be here in Forest Lake without any additional subsidies and for essentially a cash transaction, I think is a win for everybody. So I'm pleased to support this this evening. Also, development brings development, and so this is a nice domino to fall and hopefully is indication of others to come. Any other questions or comments specific to this agreement? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion for the land you said is in your packet, or the landfill that's in your packet.
Mayor Bain, I move to approve the purchase agreement at the agreed-upon per acre price of $50,000. The purchase price of the 6.63 acres, which totals $331,500, $331,500.
And I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Munson and a second from Councilmember Husnick. Any further discussion on this? Not seeing any. Karen, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Hi.
Councilmember Husnick.
Hi.
Councilmember Munson.
Hi.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Hi.
And Mayor Bain.
Hi, motions approved. Next item on the agenda this evening is item 7B, which is Resolution 12142002, which is a grant application to Minnesota Public Facilities Authority for lift station improvements. And Patrick, I believe you're bringing us through this.
Yes, this is, just to be very quick, this is in relation to the $1.7 million in the bonding bill that was granted to the city. The first step to accepting this is to, for the council to pass a resolution accepting these funds. Once that's done, we will also start filling out the application and get through the paperwork that we need to get through. But this just gives us the ability to go forward and get those funds. So you have to do this in order for us to take the first step.
Very good. Any questions of council or comments of council? I would just point out, as we have done tenure planning and as our overall infrastructure planning has taken place over the last couple of years, these bond funds, and to be clear, these are grant funds that we're receiving. these bond funds and and to be clear, these are grant funds that we're receiving from the state of Minnesota help to fill a really significant need in our sewer system. And this is the first time that the city of Forest Lake has been granted thi- this type of funding from the state. It's the first time we've applied. And so I'd like to give um kudos to Ryan and Dave and Patrick and everybody who put this grant um proposal together and um has kind of made these funds available. So um it's good to see an alternative source of revenue. Um, it's much needed and helps to kind of fill the gap that we've had in our sewer fund. So with that, I will motion that we approve resolution twelve fourteen twenty zero two, applying for a grant from the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority. Also, I would be remiss if I didn't say with gratitude to both Senator Housley and Representative Dentmer, who helped um bring this through, particularly at the last moment, as we thought perhaps that this wasn't going to make the final cut. Um, they they pulled us over the finish line, so uh much gratitude to them.
Mayor Bain, I was going to catch you on that one, but
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm glad you caught it yourself. Thanks.
So there is a motion. Is there a second?
I will happily second.
Second from Councilmember Munson. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard?
Hi.
Councilmember Husnick?
Hi.
Councilmember Munson? Councilmember Beistrum?
Hi.
And Mayor Bain?
I motions approved. And our next item on the agenda this evening is item seven C, the Metro INET Information Technology Services Joint Powers Agreement. Patrick, you are bringing us through this one as well?
Yes, uh, currently the city receives its uh information technology support through the Metro INET. The Metro INET is uh basically the IT department in Roseville. Uh, they have been servicing a number of communities for all these years, but have recently decided that they need to not have that being a part of that business. They don't need to support all the other communities with staff and all the personnel costs and all the things that go with it. So the proposal is to spin off the Metro INET into a freestanding uh authority that that is run by all of the forty some odd communities or organizations that that are a part of this. They have found that recruiting staff, recruiting uh supervisors has been difficult because they have to restrict themselves to uh Roseville's pay scales and they're losing ground to other uh metro uh consortiums as well. They they can't seem to get the people they need because they're losing ground as far as salary benefits and things like that. Basically, we really don't have a lot of alternative here. We the city really doesn't want to start going down the road of creating its own IT services and hiring people and having contracts for technical support. This is a good idea. The city will be part of the board of directors on this and have a vote in all budget and operational issues that that come across. I think it's a real good idea. I think it'll continue to keep our IT needs stable and growing and uh keep the the stability of the Metro INET together. It's it's an important thing that the city doesn't have the wherewithal and the resources to go off on our own. It's just wouldn't be a very good idea. So this agreement will start sometime in fiscal year twenty twenty one. I don't don't have a timetable on that yet. But but it has no budget impact. Earlier, we thought it might have a budget impact, but they've scaled that back. So it's budget neutral. So the consortium will take the time in the twenty twenty one to get itself together. We'll be a part of that. We'll be representative. And I ask the council's approval. And if they have questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Patrick. Counsel, what questions or comments do we have on this one? Councilmember Gerard?
Patrick, you know, this is quite a detailed proposal. Does it differ much from the one we read, I don't know, six months ago, maybe?
No, it's pretty much the same. We've uh we've had it reviewed by our our legal uh people and they have no issues with it. So it was pretty much what you saw earlier. There's very little changes from the first first uh go around. It's just trying, they were all trying to now wrap it up the end of the year so we can start working on it at the beginning of next year.
Thank you.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Um, uh, Patrick, what kind of staff time will this require? I mean, is it going to pull somebody away from some existing duties that they have?
Um, I'm gonna ask you a clarifying, staff time for Forest Lake or fast time staff time for Metro INET?
Um, staff time for Forest Lake because we we have a seat at the table, correct?
We'll have a seat at the table. It'll probably be myself or Dan. I I I would initially start to sit down and in the early uh part of this formation be on that board of directors and and so it'll pull me away from a little bit, but no one else at this point.
Okay. I know when you're building something new, there tends to be kind of a, I mean, you know, pretty significant investment. So it was just
Yeah, the nice part about the nice part about this is all of the IT and the technical stuff uh infrastructures there. There's going to be really no change there. It's really how the operation uh the board of directors operates. And then the the goal is to hire a full-time manager to run the Metro INET. So I think those two things will be the the biggest hurdles. I don't I don't see it affecting any of the performance or the way uh the IT infrastructure works.
Thank you.
Are there further questions? I um just um speaking in kind of terms of the the areas where we want to be in business and the areas where we want to have allocated services or assistance from others and and things we don't want to cover individually as a city. This is in my mind, one of those areas where um we want to be part of a larger consortium that's able to have a more sophisticated risk management approach. Cities, because of the data that we interact with, are frequent targets of cybersecurity. And so being a part of a much larger organization, I just think is to our benefit and um that we have provided, we've been providing great service thus far by this service. And so I support the um the being a member of it, the new joint powers. With that, any further questions or is anybody um ready to take action? Councilmember Husnick?
As soon as I get unmute, soon as I get unmuted here. I'd make a motion that uh we join in the joint powers agreement with uh the INET Information Technology Services.
I'll second.
There's a motion from Councilmember Husnick and a second from Councilmember Gerard. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, Karen, could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Gerard?
Hi.
Councilmember Husnick?
Hi.
Councilmember Munson?
Hi.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Hi.
Mayor Bain?
I and our motions approved. Item this evening is item seven D, resolution twelve fourteen two zero zero three, Business License Fee Waiver. Dan, I think you're walking us through this.
I am. Uh, mayor members of council, um before you tonight is uh council resolution twelve fourteen twenty dash oh three. Uh, this resolution waives uh on sale and massage license fees uh for twenty twenty one. Just an update, the EDA did meet prior to this meeting, um and they passed their resolution of support for this motion or for this resolution. Um, the resolution also included their willingness to allow for the fund uh fund transfers from the EDA fund to the general fund to cover the um revenue that will be lost if the fees are waived. So the EDA isn't supporting, isn't full support um of this uh resolution tonight. Um, basically, what this uh resolution does is that any license um that is received and renewed by the city of Forest Lake prior to March four for uh March first, um would qualify for the fee waiver. Um, if there are new applications that come in after March first, um, the EDA had expressed interest in developing a refund policy where those would be run to be refunded directly from the EDA and not have to be uh fees waived as a part of this of this resolution. It's anticipated right now that the reduction to the general fund would be approximately forty five thousand dollars. Um, we do see quite a bit of revenue come in from our liquor licenses. So there is a general fund implication. However, the EDA as part of their motion, as mentioned earlier, um, did acknowledge their willingness to use their existing fund balance to cover that um revenue loss. So in the end of the day, with the EDA's fund balance transfer, there will be no impact to general fund. Um, if council does elect to pass this resolution tonight, that fund balance transfer would take would take place in March after we have the full count of renewals. Everybody goes through the renewal process and they are completed and done for twenty one. Uh, it should also be noted that this does not waive any other of the other license fee or license requirements. They still have to show all of the other requirements of the license, just simply just waves the fee requirement. So they still have to be in compliance with the rest of the license the license renewal uh criteria. Uh, therefore, staff is recommending approval of resolution twelve fourteen twenty dash oh three. And I'll be happy to answer any questions the council has regarding this resolution.
Thank you, Dan. Counsel, questions? This was fairly dis- discussed pretty thoroughly in a in a previous workshop discussion. And so if anyone is ready to take action, happy to entertain a motion as well.
Mayor Bain, I move to approve resolution number twelve dash fourteen dash twenty dash zero three, a resolution waiving certain city license renewal fees for twenty twenty one.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Councilmember Munson and a second from Councilmember Beistrum. Any further discussion? I'll just say thank you to my our my colleagues on the EDA for um the use of fund balance. Um, it's uh those funds are there for a rainy day and it's certainly a rainy day. So happy to happy to be able to provide this relief in twenty twenty one. With that, we've got a motion and a second. And Karen, could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Gerard?
Hi.
Councilmember Husnick?
Hi.
Councilmember Munson?
Hi.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Hi.
And Mayor Bain?
I motion approved. Moving right along, our next agenda item this evening is item seven E, which is resolution twelve fourteen two zero zero four, ordinance seven hundred, the twenty twenty one fee schedule. Karen, I believe you are walking us through this.
Right. And so um oh, last meeting or maybe a couple of meetings ago was presented workshop, maybe it was workshop. The um twenty twenty one fee schedule was presented to council um for input. And there wasn't much change that I think um I think the biggest change and Kathy pointed out uh this evening, the um fees for Fenway, those were added. Also, there were fees added for non-resident in the parks department. I think pretty much all the other fees stayed the same. There were a few changes in fire and building, but nothing significant. And so what's before you tonight is a summary resolution for the ordinance. The summary is what gets published in the paper because obviously the ordinance is so long, but you're voting on the 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 resolution and the ordinance or approving wanting to approve the resolution and the ordinance. And I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any. I think Jamie is in the meeting. And so if there are questions about the Fenway fees, um, I think she's here to answer any questions about that.
Thank you. Councilmember Munson?
Yep, just that's exactly what I had a question about. Just um, I don't know, Jamie, if you're able to answer this yet, but just kind of an approximate timeline for that. I actually have a FLA meeting tomorrow night and I'm sure that might come up. Do we have?
Yeah, you know, mayor and members of the council, the Fenway Field fees, um, we just need to complete some market research on that and make sure in alignment and have discussions with FLA. So the timeline for that is January to
Okay.
get those fees established. And then that will come back to city council at that time.
Okay, to approve separately. Got it.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on the fee schedule? I noted previously, and it's just been such an irritant that I have to note it again, that this is when the airport fee does officially come off of the fee schedule. So happy to see that come off officially. So any other questions related to the fee schedule for twenty twenty one? Karen, go ahead.
I should say too, what was added, since we had such a um big discussion about surface water management, that was itemized separately. It was in the previous schedule. It was just one line item in the public works section. So that has been separated out and has a little bit of an explanation of what that is. I know there was a discussion about being more transparent about what that actually means, what surface water management actually means. And so there's a little bit better description of that in the fee schedule. I know Ryan can speak to it in a lot more detail than that about what it is. But I think um I had to summarize, you know, try to summarize what that means. And so that has been itemized out separately for a little more transparency on that fee schedule ordinance.
Thank you, Karen. I'll entertain a motion or any further questions on this item. And again, it's twelve fourteen two zero zero four. Okay, Councilmember Husnick?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we um adopt resolution twelve fourteen twenty dash zero four. The ordinance number seven zero zero dash the twenty twenty one fee schedule.
Motion, motion from Councilmember Husnick and a second from Councilmember Gerard. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard?
Hi.
Councilmember Husnick?
Hi.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Hi.
Councilmember Munson?
Hi.
And Mayor Bain?
I motion approved. Our next item on the agenda this eve- evening is item seven F, which is the review of CARES Act funds related to Castlewood Golf Course and potential reallocation of funding. Patrick, I believe you're walking us through this.
Yes, um, since there's been a lot of conversation regarding the Castlewood Golf Course Building and how it's funded, I think the council needs to take a look at and maybe reconsider what we've done. When we first got into the CARES Act, we just kind of a story that we didn't have a lot of guidance to begin with. There was really no guidance. We we had to talk to a lot of people. And we didn't have any rules or guidance or how to spend the money or not. So that's why I made it early into the budget process and uh we asked the council to approve it. Hindsight's twenty twenty, obviously. I think it's uh something that the council should reconsider. Yeah, I believe it's probably not the best use for the CARES Act and uh we should rescind the the cost and of using CARES Act money to build the building.
Thank you, Patrick. Questions of council? Or questions from council? I guess, Patrick, I would jump in just to ask a clarifying question. If we were to choose to not use those funds for Castlewood, are we at a timeline? What what does that mean for those funds? Are we at a timeline where there's opportunity to reallocate? Or are we in a timeline where we return those funds?
I think we have a small timeline to possibly reallocate those internally uh before the end of December. We can't get any to big, large programs of grants or anything like that. We'd have to just look internally to see if anything else qualifies. And if not, then we would just have to report to report out that we didn't use the funds and return the money if that's possible. So what we'll do in the next few weeks is uh try to figure out if there's any other expenses that we may have missed. The department heads have been already asked to do that. And we'll see if there's anything else that we can substitute for that for those funds. But if not, then that'll be returned.
And just for further clarity, because we've had a lot of questions on this, um asking department funds aheads for any of those but, you know, qualifying expenses. At this point, does that does that mean allocation of salaries related to emergency management, PPE type expenses?
Yes, yes, it's mostly mostly salaries related to responding to the pandemic and or possibly more PPE if if necessary. There's not much more that we can uh really come up with in the next few weeks to 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 make sense. So we'll just go back and make sure that we've allocated all of our expenses as far as uh salaries and benefits and whatever else that calculation is and see if there's any additional need for PPE.
And then is there a is there a final timeline for a final report? I know there was an initial report that went to Minnesota Department of Management and Budget, but is there a final or would we just be filing an update?
Uh, I'm not sure. That it's either an update or a final report. I believe that it probably either one is probably by the end of December or sometime the first part of January, but it it has, it probably is right around the corner. But it has, it probably is right around the corner.
Okay, thank you. Council member Beistrom.
Um, I know that we had a couple of nonprofits anyway that kind of didn't make that cut in the last round of funding. Is is and I'm not sure why, you know, they didn't, you know, maybe they just didn't qualify. I'm not, I'm not sure, but is there a possibility of being able to circle back to them to meet that need with a portion of this?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure that timeline and if we have the time to do that. I know that some of them did not qualify for whatever reasons and Dan quarterbacked that one. So he can kind of tell us what reasons those were. But going through and having those new applications and reviewing and underwriting and all the things we do would be. I'm not sure we'd make that, so.
Yeah, I'm I'm not necessarily, I mean, I realize we're on a very tight timeline at this point in time. Ideally, I would love to see that go to the community if and if there would be any way to to make that happen. But I'm just wondering if those that were in the queue that didn't get funded, if they didn't get funded because we didn't have the resources to fund them or if they didn't get funded for another reason. There's a possibility to circle back to them and potentially provide them the funding.
I I could provide a little update on where, why they weren't funded. So on the nonprofit side, what happened was since a lot of the applicants to supply the underwriting had to supply quite a bit of information. I went through the list on the first come, first served basis and went down through the until the funds were all accounted for. So the ones that didn't get approved, I don't know if they're going to fully qualify because I don't have their under underwriting materials at this point. I had their application, the initial application, but since we were ran out of funds, if you know, we're out of funds, there's no point in requesting them to do all the paperwork, do all the work on their end for us to get the, you know, materials to provide the underwriting. So this, that's the main reason. So right now, based on what we have, I can't say with certainty if they would or wouldn't have qualified for the grants had additional funds been available. If it turns out that we can allocate additional funds to this, you know, I can reach back out to those ones that weren't funded, ask them to submit and try to go through an underwriting process, you know, as quickly as possible since they did apply. Based on the criteria, they did meet the timelines for the initial submission. We just happened to run out of funds prior to them, you know, going through full underwriting.
I'd like to see that happen.
I would too.
I, yeah, I I agree to the extent that there's an opportunity to, with their understanding that this is a quick turnaround. I think it's worth at least asking the question and I would prefer to see that happen than us using those funds for, you know, other. Overhead charges or other things where there might be additional city type expenses. There's an opportunity for that to go. I think that's part of what we are, the community at this point.
Hi, Mayor Bain. If that does, can you just keep us updated on that, Dan? Just because I imagine we're probably going to get some questions on that. If that does work out. I know I had asked to email Patrick a similar question earlier.
I will, I will provide updates as in real time as I get them on.
Okay. As real as you can get.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
To be clear, to be clear on what's being asked, we're not reopening an application process. We are just going back to those that had previously applied. But and I appreciate Dan's sensitivity. Initially, the thought was this was all going to go to business. And so I appreciate his sensitivity on not having nonprofits go through a rigorous underwriting process if they weren't going to qualify. And for a period of time, that seemed like that was the case. So this is a bit of a hail Mary, but I'd rather take that, you know, take that, go through that effort. And I I suspect some of those nonprofits are going to be very cooperative in providing some very quick turnaround on information. And if we're able to use the funds in that way, I think that's a win.
Yeah.
Um, in terms of, so in terms, in terms of next action, just to kind of kind of itemize where we are here. So it sounds like there's over. Actually, I'll speak for myself. My my preference at this point, given feedback from certainly the community, which we've heard and certainly feedback from staff is that we direct staff to. Reallocate those funds that were used for Castlewood. Look for opportunities for us to use those here in Forest Lake for the remainder tight timeline we have. And if we aren't able to utilize those funds, then it would be to return them and through whatever that proper channel is, if it is to at this point to the county or to the state that we would be directing staff to take that action. I guess that's specific to CARES Act. I have some other kind of questions related to the broader overall project. But I guess I'd just pause and ask for any feedback or amendments from council on this specific action related to the CARES Act dollars.
Mayor Bain.
Council member Gerard, go ahead.
I back you a hundred percent. I think, you know, try to give it if we can to the nonprofits that we aren't able to and then see what else we have after that.
Okay.
I agree. I I I would like there to be a part two to that motion and I I promise I will get to a motion.
Uh-oh.
She's frozen.
We losing more again?
Sam?
Yeah, well, we're back. I I I just want to make sure that everybody knows that I would support any any amount that we can get done with whatever Dan's information has, you know. And we and we have got a couple of weeks, so let's see what we can do with that. And the rest, if we can't make that happen, we'll have to send it back, that's all.
Right, I guess, I I guess the other piece of this for me is is I I believe this is that this has the potential to be a good project. I think we have some challenges that we need to work through. I've said it over and over again, I think with the spirit of cooperation and collaboration, we can work through those challenges. But I would like to continue to see us, you know, pursue some sort of action related to Castlewood. I'm not exactly sure what that is or what that means. But I I do believe that there, you know, there are some opportunities. I I think, you know, we we certainly heard a lot of passion here tonight and we have to take those concerns of our neighbors into consideration. But we also want this to be a viable. Option that, you know, we have minimal impact on our taxpaying citizens. And so I think opportunities to looking for opportunities to to generate revenue is a good thing. I think the other piece for me about this property is I do think we really have an opportunity to make it a year-round facility. You know, there have been talks in the past about, you know, snowshoe rental or cross-country ski rental. It's a beautiful piece of property to do those kinds of things on and it's just sitting there for several months of the year. So why wouldn't we look for opportunities to make it a year-round kind of destination venue right here, right here in our community? So I'd really like to continue this conversation about how we can make this work for everyone and provide those services to our community as well.
Yeah, we have, as far as I'm concerned, we have several different options that we can discuss. And one of them is just abandon the whole thing with the the building and give the building to Public Works. We could always put it up where they need it for storage and that sort of thing. The other thing that I've thought about is, hey, this is a big hassle. Let's find a new spot to build an entrance into our golf course. Different spots, maybe over on, maybe over on the east side or something. And so there's or or move ahead with the with the building as we planned with, you know, city funding. So I think we have several different things to discuss there and 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 we have some options, I think. So maybe we can stop some of that. That you'll will there, you know.
Patrick, do we, and I don't want to put you on the spot. But do we have next steps with Max and Stella's in terms of conversation about the agreement?
Yeah, sure. Let me just say that there was never, there is never a non-cooperative spirit here. I think it's always, cities always been open to some discussions. And I think Max made a lot of valid points and that we need to make those next steps. But we also then have to consider what the city needs, what what the operation needs. And so we're open to discussion and and some kind of new agreement, but we just don't know what that's going to be. So we'll have to format, Max made a lot of suggestions. We need to review those and start to think about what we would need and what we would want and open that dialogue. So it'll, it has to come quickly, but it also has to be in concert with. Our contractual operator. We haven't discussed that with them yet. And, you know, some of the limitations that may have been suggested may be a breakpoint for them. I don't know. So it's kind of a three-way discussion that we have to start on.
You certainly want input from those folks, so no doubt about it.
Yeah.
That that for me, you know, is 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 really concerning. I mean, I I think we had a lot of success with foursome and I think we need to be able to, you know, we want to continue, I think, to operate. This course is appreciated by many. And I and I, we know that it can be very difficult to get somebody in who can provide the level of expertise foursome was able to provide, you know, on on really relatively short notice. So, you know, I'd hate to see us, I'd hate to see us, you know, set something up that would compromise that relationship as well. So I'm, I agree, this is definitely a a three-way conversation, so.
I I just, I just want to say, and I've said it a hundred times already, I'm not a golfer. However, the golf course there, the Castlewood Golf Course is an extremely important part of our city. There's no getting around it. And look at the USET thing gave us this year during a pandemic, when you couldn't go anywhere else, but you at least you could go out there and get some fresh air and do some walking or whatever and and that sort of thing. So we got it, we got to do whatever we can to to, you know, make this a good compromise. But we do, but at the same time, we do have options.
Yeah, and I think the council has to remember back in March of this year or February of this year when we had a bunch of people in council chambers concerned about the future of the golf course. I mean, it's important. Amenity to this community and we need to, we need to continue it. I think, I think it's popular. I think people like it. And it's a very basic family golf course that you can take your little kid out or kids out for pretty, pretty affordable price, have some outdoor recreation with them and teach them the game of golf. So I think it's important.
I apologize for the lack of internet connectivity tonight. I did get kicked out again, but I am back on my phone. Catch me up. Did somebody make a motion in my place or are we still waiting for a motion? Or are we, are we ready for a motion? Happy to, happy to continue the conversation.
No motions were made while you were gone, Mara.
All right.
Well, I think we just transitioned to a discussion about next steps around Castlewood and and directing, potentially directing staff to create some potential scenarios that we could respond to, react to.
So with with that conversation that we've had, I guess I would make a two-step motion tonight. One being that we direct staff to reverse course on the use of CARES Act funding for the Castlewood project and utilize available options to us to, of which we talked about tonight, to consider utilizing those funds. Primary being the the funding of nonprofits that have previously applied as well as potential for other city expenses. And then second part, portion of this motion is to direct staff to reevaluate the feedback we've heard and come back to council with a full plan for the Castlewood location.
I second.
I'll second.
Only because that's who I heard first.
That's, that's okay.
Month in. Any further discussion on this?
Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Council member Gerard.
Hi.
Council member Husnick.
Hi.
Council member Munson.
Hi.
Council member Beistrom.
Hi.
And Mayor Bain.
Hi. Motion's approved. We will move on to our next agenda item, which is item seven G, which is the year in review, and Ryan.
A little fun now, Mayor City Council. So within your packet is a document that I prepare annually. Just give us a time to look back and reflect on all the things that we've been involved with, the decisions you guys have been part of and how the cities actually, you know, move forward. You know, up top, I got a lot of the infrastructure projects and planning projects, you know, starting with our local street projects. And we made obviously a significant improvement this year at Highway ninety seven in Goodview. And with all the growth that we've seen in the last several years and you'll, what you'll see below, you'll obviously puts a strain on technology or capacities. Thus, you know, a lot of the water plant stuff, let's move forward to improve and increase capacity. And a lot of stuff that has some very nice major projects coming in the pipeline. You know, obviously with Washington County project on Everton Avenue there by Menards, which will have our first workshop in January, the county will be at and presents on that. So I mentioned earlier in the EDA about this project that, you know, if we haven't been involved in anything to date, this is a not-to-miss meeting. You'll basically get caught up and see what the project has progressed to and next steps and or that moves forward. And also with MinDOT planning the Highway ninety seven improvements, you know, that's going to be a major overhaul entryway to the south portion of the city. That's going to just make things so much better because I mean, just when you guys drive I thirty five right now, the feel that you have now when you drive that versus before construction, it's going to feel like that. And it's going to have the aesthetic look to it when it's all sent on and the pedestrian facilities that we're talking about with just these two projects and what they're going to connect to in the city is is going to be, you know, such a great amenity for people that live adjacent to these areas. We're also able to complete our first standalone ADA improvement project. So it wasn't a big project by any means, but it was our first step coming out of the completion and approval of the ADA transition plan that was required upon us and by the city completing that study, that then also allowed us to get federal funding for the roundball project that we talked about earlier. So these areas are targeted in areas that have high-traffic pedestrian usage. So we, you know, hit on some ped ramps or whether it's heaving of sidewalks and that provide obstacles for people on ADA. Like a wheelchair or walker, stuff like that, that makes things much easier for them to move through those areas. We're, you know, two years now into our pond cleaning project, so that was, you know, it's been huge advances there. And then just a number of studies that we've been a part of that are obviously leading to a lot of economic developments. And as you move down in the commercial housing section here, you look at the nice mix of projects you guys have. You're not just one-dimensional. I mean, look at all the different types of projects you have. And even by the time that I wrote this, I think I wrote last week, submitted by Wednesdays. You know, we already had another application come in, which is Timber Ridge Two Apartment Buildings off of Everton Avenue, which is just south of Menards. So same developer that did the apartment building at Nineteenth and Everton, he's proposing two apartment buildings on that lot. We've got a live application or common planning commission in January with that. And, you know, this is going to bring a lot more foot traffic to local businesses, you know, up the road there than with the pedestrian improvements of the county road. It's just going to be a nice connectivity, nice improvements and a lot that's, you know, redeveloped and will have some amenities to it. Also, getting back on, you know, some of the capacity issues with technology. This year, we saw our first three cell, small cell applications by Verizon Wireless. They haven't constructed anything yet. But that's, you know, telling you that there's obviously a lot of users in the area. And not only infrastructure-wise, but technology-wise and data capacity, they're seeing advancements on that stuff too. So that's good to see. And then I always just have that section of grant stuff in there. You know, that's one thing that we always dedicated the city that we're always going to chase funds for you guys. And this is what we were successful for and there's a lot of other miscellaneous things that you could put in there that we're moving towards. One thing that's, you know, coming up with the lays of the legislation here is an LRP, the same grant application that we're successful for building the south leg of the Parkway. Well, we know that our future funds are going to be hurting and we don't really have a project that nears that same things that the the project's going to score high. So we're trying to be creative with that. We're going after that with the county on our local share on County Road thirty-three. So we're trying to be creative with that. We're going after that with the county on our local share on County Road thirty-three. We've already gotten the okay with the county to move forward with that. So some of you guys will still be seeing future stuff with that moving forward in the future on very soon council meetings on resolutions, letters of support and stuff like that. And then on the bottom, we got our community involvement. You know, that's one thing we've always are committed to being strong in the community and a bunch of activities. Now, these are just activities that you see, we'll see a large group of my employers at, uh, there's a lot of other individual things that happen that we just don't even need to talk about is stuff that we do. And some of my other coworkers that do, but these are the big things that we get involved with in your community. And this is something fun. That's fun to do each year and look back, see how far you guys have come in just one year. And, you know, I've been doing this every year. So when I look back to how this is growing, it's just pretty cool to look back at. So that's all.
Thank you, Ryan. It's always, this is always one of my favorite recaps because you do such a great job of kind of pulling, pulling together all of the different pieces of projects in our community and all the value that you and your team bring. So thank you for that. And thanks, thanks to your team as well for all of the great work. We have this on the action agenda item. And actually I think as a ceremonial, I would, I would motion that we approve Ryan's year-end review. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We'll take a second from Councilmember Beistrum and we'll make Karen do another. She probably had her notes closed out here, but we'll have her take another roll call vote.
I did have that section.
We weren't done yet.
Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
And Mayor Bain.
Aye. Motion approved.
And that being the end of our action agenda, we don't have any items for discussion this evening. We will move on to staff updates. Let's start with Patrick and then go to Dan.
Uh, just a few things. I'd like to thank the council for their hard work on the budget this year. I think we came out with a good budget. Six months, we're six months worth of work. I think it came out pretty well. I also like to thank you for, uh, approving the land sale. I think that is a, a big opportunity that is again, a, a four or five months worth of negotiating and work is uh, I think that's going to be really good for the city and hopefully it'll spur some more development on. And then finally, um, we held interviews last week for the communications position. Uh, we will probably make a job offer shortly and then bring it back in January to the council for their approval.
Excellent. Any questions for Patrick this evening? Seeing none, we'll go to Dan and then Chief Newman.
Uh, Mayor members of council, just a quick update on the communication side. Tonight we ended up having to stream the EDA meeting on Facebook Live since the YouTube livestream was being used by the council meetings. Um, as a result of that, I actually am seeing a lot better engagement on Facebook Live than I am seeing on YouTube. Our viewership was probably double or triple on Facebook Live versus, uh, what we've been putting out on YouTube. So I will be looking at a way to try to get our streams on both channels if possible. Uh, but I was pretty, pretty, uh, impressed with the number of views that Facebook Live was getting. And there's also some live commentary happening as well. And there's a lot more engagement on Facebook than I'm seeing on, on YouTube. Um, also a meeting with our streaming provider who does our meeting streaming. Uh, they have a new platform out there that is supposed to be more stable and provide a better resident experience. So I'm looking at the possibility of, uh, switching our streaming platforms for twenty-one. So when we get back into in-person meetings, you may have a potential new streaming partner for, for twenty-one. Same software company, just a different version of what they're currently looking at. So, um, that's what I have. If I'm happy to answer the questions council may have for me.
Any questions for Dan? All right. Chief Newman and then Chief Peterson.
Uh, Mayor members of the council, I have no updates for tonight and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them for me.
Any questions for Chief Newman this evening? All right. Seeing none, Chief Peterson and then Captain Weiss.
Yeah, Mayor and City Council members, good evening. The only item I have for you, uh, is the Forest Lake Police Department is excited to partner with the Drolson Family Foundation and many other businesses who have donated funding to host the Shop of the Cop event at the Forest Lake Walmart store this week. So this year's shop of the cop will look a little differently this year due to COVID nineteen. We will be assisting and purchasing presents for ten families who are in need, wrapping the presents and dropping them off to those families. The Drolson Family Foundation will be purchasing food for the families for the holidays and they will be joining us and dropping off the presents and the food. It's always an exciting event. I believe this might be our seventh or eighth year, um, hosting a shop of the cop. Other than that, I don't have any further updates for you. Do you have any questions for me?
Anything for Chief Peterson this evening? Seeing none, uh, Captain Weiss, and then we'll go to Peter.
Mayor, members of this council, from an emergency management perspective, I don't have any updates for you unless you have questions for me.
Any questions for Captain this evening? A council member by strong, go ahead.
Um, I'm not sure if this is a Captain Weiss or Chief Peterson question. I know we've had, um, and it actually is in my report, uh, some communication around some, um, um, non-compliance with emergency order in the community. Um, how do we typically handle that? It's, I know you've kind of focused on education in the past.
Yep. So what we've been doing is, uh, when we do receive those complaints, uh, it's either Captain Weiss or I that will handle those. Um, we'll, uh, visit the businesses and then we will, um, if we do see one that's, um, in non-compliance, once again, like you had mentioned, we do the education and informing. Um, if we, if that does not work, we take it to the next step, uh, next level, which is meeting with them one-on-one, um, talking with them, emailing them, uh, getting them copies of the, uh, executive order. If that does not work, then we notify, um, the Attorney General's, uh, office through the state who then takes it to that next level, which, uh, could possibly involve a citation or fines for any businesses that are, uh, in non-compliance.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Um, we will go on to Pete and then Dave.
Uh, Your Honor, council members, good evening. Uh, if you'll permit me, I have a thought I'd like to share, uh, and then the call year heading into the holidays, uh, end of year. Looking back over the year, uh, I got to say, well, one of the highlights for me has been the opportunity to serve the city and get to know, uh, staff uh, and council, uh, exhibit A, uh, my argument would be, uh, the year-end review that Ryan just gave you. This is a super exciting city to serve, uh, given what I do. Uh, and so I would just like to say thank you for that opportunity. Uh, I wish you all a, a happy holiday season and here's hoping twenty twenty-one is so much better than twenty twenty.
Amen to that. Thank you. Thank you, Pete. Any questions for Pete this evening? And Amanda, thank you to you as well. We really appreciate the services we get from your firm. Fantastic work. Thank you. With that, Ryan, anything further for council this evening? And after Ryan, we'll go to Jamie. Go ahead. Go ahead, Ryan.
No additional things. Uh, just know though that that's city council workshops coming up with the Washington County to talk about Everton Avenue. Our normal workshop, workshop would have been on Martin Luther King Day. So it's moved to a Tuesday. If there's questions or anything you want to know about the project before that workshop, communicate to us so we can get you up to speed on some stuff. So we don't waste time where there's other things we've got to move forward on and make some decisions. So the project can then, you know, do its thing where it can continue to talk with the property, adjacent property owners. There's some, there's some stuff going on with the Mar- Menards relocation, the driveway. That's going to have to go back to their corporate, you know, headquarters. So it's not just, we can't lag anymore. We got to be ready for that meeting and, you know, there's going to be a large local share in this project. And there's some things that we can do or not do that are going to increase or, uh, move some of that stuff. And then also it'll, you know, there's a lot of feedback that's already been given online that's, you know, we have the opportunity to do a lot, some other things that we planned for within this project, but I just want to make sure that, you know, this is a big project. It's going to have a big impact in the city during construction. So now is our time to be engaged and provide that feedback on this project. And, you know, that's why I keep talking about this point in this, this milestone of this project. So we can't let opportunities pass here on out. So that's all.
Thank you for that, Ryan. I wouldn't say, um, that, that workshop you're referring to is that workshop third. It's now Tuesday in January. We have some time between now and then. And so if there are advanced materials you would like council to start looking at in advance of that meeting to prepare ourselves. Um, I'm happy to, happy to take some time looking at information because I agree with you. Timelapse are going to be tight. And we're going to need to make some decisions and provide some good feedback.
So on December twenty-second, we're re-engaging with the county on a Zoom meeting to talk specifically about what stuff to provide to you guys as well. So
Perfect. Happy to take a look sooner rather than later. Um, alternatively, maybe even add, just as me thinking out loud, we could add a discussion item for us just to circle the wagons internally on that first meeting in January. Um, where it's just kind of council only discussion, just to give us some preliminary information. And that really primes the pump for the, the workshop with Washington County the week after. So think about that. Think about, happy to give the agenda time for that as well.
Yeah.
All right. That makes Karen cringe because that's a big, that's a big meeting, but we'll make it work. Okay. Jamie, you're next. And Dave, I skipped you, but we'll come back to you after Jamie. Jamie.
Yeah. Mayor and members of the council, um, the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission has their final regular meeting tomorrow evening. And that'll close out the year for our meetings with the Parks Commission. And then aside from that, we are working quickly on some holiday activities, um, for the community for the next couple of weeks. Um, so stay tuned. We're going to release the information tomorrow, but just some simple fun ways to spread some holiday cheer and get involved in the community, um, with a holiday message. So stay tuned tomorrow and um, you'll see some more information. If that, um, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you, Jamie. Any questions for Jamie this evening? Seeing none, Dave, and then we will go to Donovan after Dave.
Mayor Council, nothing major to update you on. Um, if you have any questions for me, be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Dave this evening? Not seeing any Donovan and then Sandy.
Uh, Mayor members of coun- council. I'd like to, uh, you know, give my appreciation to Ryan, all the work he's done this year. I'm always jealous when he does those engineering reviews and there's, there's a great zoning review out there too. Um, there's much overlap with that. Um, I do also want to, um, echo what Ryan said about some upcoming projects, um, that are going to both, you know, the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission and, like mission and the city council. So look for, um, some of those coming into, you know, in January and February onto your agendas. Happy to get any questions from the city council.
Thank you, Donovan. Any questions for Donovan this evening? Seeing none, Sandy, and then we'll do Karen after Sandy.
Um, I have no updates tonight unless there's any questions that you may have of me.
This is kind of your finish line, isn't it, for the year? So any, any questions for Sandy? Not seeing any. All right. And Karen.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Um, I'm busy working on all the licensing. And so it sounds like the next step with that will be to um, work with Dan and figure out how are we going to notify some of these businesses about their waiver? Um, and I have already started processing some of their, um, applications and checks they turned in. So that will be, uh, a reverse of that process. Those checks will be mailed back to um, those businesses with the on-sale liquor license and massage license. Um, so I'm working on that. I'm also working already on that first January meeting because as you said, it's a big meeting, starts off the year. And there's usually a lot of agenda items on that. So I want to put it out there to everybody to please turn your documents into me um, early so I can make sure council gets all the information that they need. And then there was a reminder from Washington County about the, um, um, I'm, I'm, I'm losing it. The, uh, meeting in April for property. Board of Appeals. Meeting. So the training, um, they need at least one council member, preferably two for that board of appeals. The training is online. I sent an email out. I'll send another one out to council members and I will make sure Hannah gets that. Um, so that the training I believe has to be accomplished by February first, maybe or end of February, one of those. So just so that, so you're aware of that. I will be sending an email this week for you guys on that. Um, I think that's all the major updates that I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Karen? One question that comes to mind, I don't know if I've seen any information about how the League of Minnesota Cities is doing the elected officials conference this year. Maybe you sent it and I missed it. Do you, have you seen how?
I've looked into it. I, I haven't seen, they don't have it open yet. They were going to open that information up in December. So I'm expecting to be able to get at that too. It's on my list. Um, so I can make sure that Hannah gets that. But yeah, they haven't, it's going to be all online is my, is what I'm, what I think I saw. And so, um, as soon as that registration opens up, it's not open yet. As soon as that registration opens up, I will uh, make sure that Hannah gets that and I can forward it to the other council members as well. So that if you want to, um, revisit that training, it'll be available.
Thank you. Any other questions for Karen? I think I have not missed, I think I've picked up all staff and I don't think I've missed anybody. Um, and let's move on to council updates and let's start with Councilmember Husnick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the EDA meeting tonight as you did also. And, uh, we got as far as the, uh, business license fee waivers before we had to leave for the special meeting at six o'clock to deal with the, um, budget. And so, um, that, that's all I had to report tonight, except that, uh, this is going to be our last regular meeting for the year. Is that correct? So I just want to take the time to, to, uh, thank Paul for about thirty years of service to the city of Forest Lake and the township. And, uh, he and I worked together for a long, long time on a planning commission way back when. And, and, uh, so now he's going to leave us and I want to wish him well. And, uh, so take care and thanks a million, Paul, for all the, all those years. Thank you.
Very well said, Councilmember Husnick, and I echo those sentiments, uh, for sure. If we were in a different day, there would be a cake wake and all sorts of celebration. And so we're a little bit like the little drummer boy tonight. This is all we've got, but thank you, thank you for your service to Forest Lake. You will be missed. So thank you.
You're fully retired now.
Yeah, ma- maybe we could have a parade or something. I don't know.
Virtual parade. We can drive by his house. Let's do it. Let's make it happen. Socially distancing without a quorum of council for sure. But yeah.
Yeah. Well, that's all I have for tonight. So thank you.
Excellent. Well said. And, um, Councilmember Munson and then Councilmember Beistrum.
Or just quick update, um, Rush, I haven't updated on Rush Line Task Force in a while because they haven't been meeting. Um, but it looks like that's going to pick back up here again in January and then have the Forest Lake Athletic Association meeting tomorrow night.
Excellent. Could we do when you're ready or when it makes sense? Could we just do a revisit of Rush Line Task Force? I know that, you know, they went into this long study period of environmental review and there wasn't a lot of active, it was a busy time for staff and not a lot of active time for the council itself. Um, and maybe, and I don't think this council for the last two years has had um, any sort of presentation of Rush Line. We've talked about it. We certainly had updates review, but maybe just a wor- worthwhile opportunity early in the year, um, when it's the right time. Maybe we even have a member of staff join us just to kind of talk through what the plan is. Um, there is still a strong Forest Lake story there that we shouldn't lose sight of. And so good for just an opportunity to refresh.
Yep.
Good. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Beistrum and then Councilmember Gerard.
Uh, just want to acknowledge the citizen communication. I know we all received, uh, um, regarding Pat, uh, Castlewood, Forest Lake Lake Association. Um, and other things that I mentioned to Chief Peterson and Captain Weiss tonight. Um, uh, also, uh, attended a Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission meeting, um, post-workshop, but there was a good, robust discussion. Uh, they're, they're really starting to kind of take a look at the needs park by park. Um, attached some budget numbers to those, uh, really mapping things out over the course of the last or, or, or over the course of the next ten years. And they hope to have a really nice document for us to review in the first quarter of twenty twenty-one. So stay tuned for that, but they're doing great work. I also want to, uh, thank Paul, um, and just acknowledge his retirement, I think officially, right? From all things, maybe. Um, and thank staff, uh, city staff and my fellow council members for a great year. I think we accomplished a lot and I just want to wish you all happy holidays.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Gerard.
I attended the planning commission meeting. It was kind of a church night. St. Peter's came with, uh, uh, addition to their, put a rectory in and then Willow Brook was, uh, there, there, um, in the Lakes Plaza there and, and they're looking to actually buy their, buy part of that shopping center and make that their permanent church site. It was tabled. It's, it's, it's a lot of stuff with a CUP and getting everything all worked out. So there were just a lot of questions. Um, and then, uh, once again, Castlewood was on the agenda and it was also tabled. Um, and we all know where that sits. So, and, and lastly, uh, as Sam alluded to, um, this is my last planned council meeting. Um, I would like to thank the city staff, Patrick, Dan, Chief Peterson, Captain Weiss, Chief Newman, Dave, Ryan, Donovan, Sandy, and even Pete, the lawyer, um, for all of the time and guidance and wisdom, uh, and education given to me to allow me to prepare for meetings. And lastly, thank you, Mayor and Council Mara, Sam, Kathy and Kelly for giving me the opportunity to serve on the council. My hope is that I did some good for the city and minimized the pain when tough decisions needed to be made. I want to thank you for allowing me to serve. And again, I wish you all the best in the new year and happy holidays.
Thank you, Councilmember Gerard. I have a quick logistics update and a quick reminder, we will be doing a first meeting in January, um, assignment of liaison positions. So take a look at your current workload timeline, um, what you want to be working on. And if there is, um, a desire to shuffle seats, I'm happy to entertain those requests. Either just based off of interest level or, um, schedule conflicts. Um, we have a, an opportunity every year to do that and happy to make sure we've got the right seats sitting in the right positions, um, and that you're doing work that you're excited about. Um, also just, uh, I appreciated tonight, all of the year end review type activities. This has been a, a very busy year and a very unusual year. And I'm happy to see that even though we're not sitting next to each other. Um, I was recently in council chambers. Um, and it was the first time I'd been in council chambers for nine months and it's nice. I, had you asked at the beginning of the year, are we able to get this much done in a pandemic? Um, the good news is yes, we've been able to. And so thank you all for making that happen. Um, Councilmember Gerard, we wish you all of the best in whatever you decide your next retirement looks like. Thank you for sharing your time and your talents with us. Much, much appreciated. And to staff, um, I wish you the very best, happiest of holidays and hope you're able to recharge some batteries here in the next couple of weeks because we have a very full docket for twenty twenty one. And, um, my fellow council members, thank you for all of the partnership and great, great work. And, um, wish you all the very best, happy holidays and look forward to working together in twenty twenty one. With that, that is the end of our planned agenda and I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh. There's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion from Councilmember Gerard and a second from Councilmember Munson. And Karen, could we do a last roll call vote of the year, please?
You bet. Councilmember Gerard.
Hi.
Councilmember Husnick.
Hi.
Councilmember Munson.
Hi.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Hi.
And Mayor Bain.
Hi, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Happy holidays. Thank you.